Her?
I was looking.
Yeah, she gained stronger today, both.
Call the meeting order. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Tomer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Good evening, everyone. We will now have our invocation by Councilman Sherman Saunders, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. God, we come this evening to give thanks for your many blessings. Please continue to bless our nation, our world, your children everywhere. We ask for your guidance as we try to make the right decisions for the citizens of our great city. There are many needs, as well as concerns, for safety, employment, health, education, finances, family stability, and more. We ask that your love be seen in everything we do. God, these blessings we ask in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening to everyone. We have a special presentation by Stuart Suffering from the Virginia Cooperative Extension. Stuart, good evening to you and welcome to council. You can come forward at this time. I see you have a guest with you. Good evening to you both.
Yes, I'm going to deliver the first part of the presentation and my colleague, the 4H Youth Development Extension Agent, will deliver the second part.
Thank you.
I'd just like to start by saying that we have had some good years here with Cooperative Extension, serving the people of the city of Danville. I work primarily in the horticultural role, as most of everyone of you knows. The year we have here, WW Moore Juvenile Detention Home, we have a greenhouse set up there. We teach the kids various skills related to horticulture as a job skill, so that when they leave the facility and they are old enough to get a job working in the green industry, like a nursery or a lawn care company, they will have the skills that will help them get ahead and actually have a leg up on any competition they would have for any job vacancies. We do a lot of pesticide safety training, both with citizens and with professionals. For example, each year we have a large conference that we sponsor jointly with Henry County, where we bring in all the lawn care and landscape companies that want to attend, from Virginia and North Carolina. We typically draw people from as much as fifty, sixty, seventy miles away. This past year, we had a hundred and thirty people in attendance. I believe approximately thirty of those work from the city of Danville employees. Master Gardener Program, it continues to grow. We're getting a lot of volunteers. We're starting a new class day after tomorrow to train some more master gardeners. These people work throughout the community, providing horticulture education. They provide a lot of one-on-one horticulture assistance. They work under me as the Extension Agent, because this is a cooperative extension program. And they have some really, what we call flagship programs. They have one program that we're very proud of, where they work in the greenhouse at Gibson Elementary School. And they work with the children there, teaching them about plants, how they grow, and how important it is. And all of their programs that they teach there are SOL-based, so it helps the school achieve some of their SOL objectives. In a few weeks, we will have the annual Spring to Green Horticulture Symposium. We typically bring in around a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty people every year for that, some from as far away as Northern Virginia and Charlotte. And we've had, we're getting a lot of good people coming in. We're getting a lot of good speakers who want to come and talk at this program, because they've heard about it. Typically, this program generates all total around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in revenues. Most of that stays here, as we're paying caterers, paying for the facility where we hold the meeting. Some general horticulture things that we've done over the past year, served a total of two thousand people in various capacities, either through programs or telephone calls, emails, individuals with questions. They come to us for their plant questions. They've learned that they can do that. And so we've served over two thousand people doing that. I presented seventy-three formal horticulture education programs. Thirty-four of these were open to the general public. The rest were programs that I was invited to, or a master gardener was invited to, to give a program on a specific gardening topic. The master gardener volunteers contributed approximately twenty-eight hundred hours of their time last year, and they worked with approximately three thousand area students, residents. I've never been really good at this. But anyway, that's the horticulture end of it. And a couple seconds, I'll be turning the floor over to my colleague. But before I do that, I just want to say that for the past eighteen years, it has been my privilege to serve the people of Danville and to help them with their gardening problems, and work with the professionals, and help them with the horticulture and the businesses. I did that for eighteen years, and prior to that, I spent seven years at Public Works as the grounds maintenance superintendent. So I've got a long history of working with the city of Danville, but I've reached that point where it's time to step down. Now, one of the roles I have is the unit coordinator, which means I'm the administrative head for the Danville Extension Office. And I'll be stepping down from that as well. I'm still going to hang around, still help out some, but right now, I plan for the end of May to be the end of my career, when I start my new career as a retiree, and so I can just hang around and cause problems like the rest of us. But at this point, I would like to introduce the new unit coordinator, who will be taking my place on the first of June, Mr. Daniel Hale, comes here from Bedford. And he is our 4H Youth Development Extension Agent, and I think you'll find him an excellent person to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. For some reason, they seem to think I'm qualified to take his place. Let's not clue them in otherwise. I am going to be giving two reports, actually, for one of my colleagues. Obviously, there's three legs to extension. We have our horticulture, which my colleague just shared, but we also have our family consumer sciences. So I just wanted to go over briefly some of the results that she had in her programming. So after these youth participated, we had ninety percent of them learned the importance of eating a healthy diet. Eighty-nine percent learned how to make healthy food choices. Eighty-five percent reported that they ate more fruits and vegetables. Eighty-one ate more whole grains. Seventy-five percent ate less junk foods. Eighty-six percent drank more water. Ninety-five percent encouraged their family to eat meals together, which is the ideal goal of a youth program, is to not only educate the youth, but also to get those youth to educate the adults that they're with. And ninety-two percent reported that they cooked more. Also, in addition to the FCS agent, we also have an FNP program assistant, which you'll see that summarized in the report as well. And then another result of some of those programs, a hundred percent of the participants agreed that they know a lot about nutrition and healthy eating. Eighty-five percent said that they expressed an increase in confidence and leadership skills. And ninety-two percent expressed an increased knowledge of food systems. And just another program that they did, forty-six percent of participants, and these are for adults, actually, this individual works with adults, forty-six percent are able to, are more often to shop at the grocery list. Thirty-four percent more often to eat three or more servings of vegetables. Twenty-five percent are more often to chill foods after serving, and forty-eight participants are more often take opportunities to be physically active. So that's our family consumer sciences leg. So the next one I'm reporting about is my part, so I won't have to necessarily read the report for that one, because this is my programming. So what I do is I serve youth, obviously. How I do that is we identify needs in the community. So I work with the school system, primarily with Bonner Middle School and Park Avenue Elementary, to identify what needs they have in their classroom. Currently, I do STEM enrichment at Bonner Middle School, which is just identifying SOL areas where maybe the students aren't meeting the benchmarks and the goals that the teachers would like for the students to meet. And I come in and help them learn a different way, primarily through hands-on activities and experiments, but through other stuff, too. Also do a reality store program with Bonner, which is budgeting, financing, making life decisions, because that's a piece of education that kind of gets missed a little bit sometimes. I also do team building and communication at Park Avenue Elementary School. That was identified as a need, that some of the third graders were having trouble communicating without shouting. So they asked me to come in and maybe help them learn how to not shout at each other to communicate their goals. I also work with a group of excellent teen leaders in the community, the Danville 4H Teen Leadership Club. Just recently, today, actually, added up. They've contributed over twenty-eight hundred hours of community service to the city of Danville, serving their youth. So I'm incredibly proud of them for all the work that they've done there. Hopefully, you've heard of Junior 4H Camp. I do that as well. This year, combined with all of our other units, we had over four hundred youth in attendance, and it was a very successful year, I really have to say. I work closely with the Boys and Girls Club, which is a very valuable partnership that I share. We're able to share our resources, share our needs, and just serve more youth. I'm only one person. I can't reach so many people. So I'm proud that 4H is able to have that valuable partnership with other community organizations. Also partner with City Parks and Rec. I do a program at Coats Rec Center with our after-school program, which is focused primarily on environmental education, gardening, and, again, anything that they identify as a need. That's what I'm there to do, is to serve them with that. And I work regularly with the community marketplace. They've asked my teens to come in several times to perform community service and help serve breakfast to farmers, or work with the youth in educational programs, and just anything that they need. So, to sum it up, we're here to meet your needs, and that's what we've been doing this past year. I said I'm not going to read the entire report to you, but that's what we try to do, is meet your needs, and we hope to continue to do that in the next year.
Daniel, tell us more about the, I see you got six, you produce six purple ribbons at Park Avenue. What is it? First-place ribbon. What is that?
I did kind of skip that. So at Park Avenue Elementary School as well, I facilitate the science fair. There's been an existing science fair, obviously, but with 4H in there, we were able to let them participate in the 4H competition side of it. Those individuals who presented to me, everyone presented to me, those who scored high enough at Park Avenue Elementary School, were invited to participate at district contests, which is competing against all the elementary schools in the twenty-five counties that represent the Central District of Virginia Cooperative Extension. And we're super proud to say, out of those twenty-five counties and all those elementary schools, Park Avenue Elementary had six students that took home the purple ribbon, meaning that they beat the rest of the competition in the entire district in their categories and age groups.
Great. Stuart, if you can come back up, please. I've had the pleasure of working with you many times, and when the city manager puts stuff on this agenda, we're going to have to tell him for announcements and special recognitions, people who about to retire, we don't want to hear from them yet. So I just want to say congratulations to you, and thank you for all that you've done for our city and our community. Hope you enjoy your retirement, and it's been a pleasure for me personally, working with you. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to echo what the mayor said, you know, you've been a pleasure to work with, and thank you for all you've done for the community and the youth in this community as well. As a lot of people at home know, we watch the live stream here on Facebook while we're in our meetings, and several people on here are saying hello to you and giving hats off. One lady even said Stuart Sutton is a legend, and I'd have to agree with her, so. Because I'm embarrassed. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, so much.
Councilman Miller.
Well, I hope this doesn't mean you're going to discontinue your articles in the paper, because I learned a lot from that.
Oh, well.
You need to continue.
Actually, that's one of the parts of the job that I really enjoy doing. I probably will continue for a while. Whenever they hire a replacement for me, it'll be time for the new person to step up. But I'm going to try to leave some very big shoes for them to fill. But for the time being, I plan on continuing writing some of the articles, and maybe getting some of the master gardeners to write a few as well. But that's one of the things that I really enjoy doing, and so I'll probably continue doing that.
Good. Those are just awesome, so we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart, again, thank you so much for all your years. And Daniel, welcome aboard. Thank you so much for a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications from visitors. Citizens who desire to speak on items that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. If you would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please give us your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Clay, and I'm from SOVA Health. I'm the marketing manager there. And I doubt anyone's going to comment on Facebook that I'm a legend.
You never know.
I do want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and members of the City Council for letting me speak. I won't keep you but for a short second. I am here to talk to you just for a brief minute about an event, and ask for your support and for your help, at least getting the word out, about our third annual Danville Heart Gala. I know that there are some people that are sitting up here that have attended that before, and I think he could vouch that it's a great event for a good cause and a really good time. The event, of course, is to raise awareness for heart disease and educate on what a healthy heart is supposed to look like. This year, though, we put a little twist on it. I am passionate about heart health from my clinical background, but I have children, and they're in the school system. And this year, all proceeds raised are going to go back to our local youth. Did you know that high school seniors in the state of Virginia have to be CPR certified before they graduate? So we reached out to the school system, and money that is raised from this event will go back to buy CPR equipment for the schools and any AEDs that the school may need. A lot of schools are already equipped with that, but there are some traveling teams, sports teams, that would like to have a travel AED to go with them when they go to away games and things like that. So that's where our money is going to go this year. And we know, from following your Facebook lives, that part of your strategic plan is youth engagement. And so that's why I'm here, because I want to engage you. I want to give you the chance to engage and really be involved in this event this year and make it a great hit. It's grown every year. This year, we had to move to the Institute of Advanced Learning and Research, so that we can continue to grow. And it is really a fun event. I gave each and every one of you a flyer up there. If you can attend, if you could at least pass the word along. But it's seventy-five dollars a ticket, five-hundred and fifty dollars a table. And I think I might have a table with you guys' name already on it, if you would support the event. So if you have any questions, please let me know. My number and contact information is on there. Thank you.
Ms. Clay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Kelly, you're a legend tonight, so.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And SOVA does a lot of great work in the community that sometimes I think folks may not even realize, all the great things that you guys do. And this is just one example of that, but I want to thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here and pitch it to you.
This is your council, so anytime you want to come. But thank you. We will certainly help get the word out about this.
Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
Did I understand you right to say that each student that graduates from high school has to do CPR?
Yes, sir. That's correct. In the state of Virginia, right. And there's other states, but I do know state of Virginia.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, that's an awesome requirement, because I can give you countless examples of, you know, people have been saved because a bystander knew CPR, you know, exercising in Planet Fitness, somebody codes, somebody decided to know CPR at a school. I mean, you could save your, kids could save their parents.
That's correct.
And people can see, you know, one of our secretaries saved her husband. So really, everybody ought to know CPR.
Yes. And, you know, hands-only CPR is a really, really big deal. My twelve-year-old daughter could do it on someone at a friend's school. And being able to provide this equipment for these schools gives us, people like me and Dr. Miller, the foot in the door to go in there and really teach these children hands-only CPR, and what it's like to have a healthy heart. And it starts with our children. Our parents, the parents listen to their children, and it starts at that age. So this is our opportunity to really engage our youth.
Yeah, people for years were reluctant to do CPR, because they didn't want to breathe and somebody else. But you don't have to do that. If you just maintain the circulation, that's ninety-five percent of it. So until somebody else can come and help you, or the rescue squad can get there. So you don't have to breathe for somebody, just pump.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your partnerships, for what you're doing in our community. And thank you so much. I see the dancing part. I was waiting for the Vice Mayor to get up and show you his dancing shoes that he has on tonight, but he refused not to. But thank you. Thank you for all that you're.
You can come and see Dr. Miller.
Oh, yes. They're part of the team. Thank you so much. And thank you for what you're doing. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time? Anyone else? The meeting minutes. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve the meeting, the minutes from our last meeting?
Is there a second? Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Aye. Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Tomer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye. Under new business consideration of designating Ashlon View LLC as exempt from local real property taxation, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance exempting certain real property owned by Ashlon View Incorporated from local real property taxation.
Is there a second? Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Tomer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Communication, City Manager. Thank you. Deputy City Manager. Thank you. City Clerk? City Attorney?
Nothing to see here, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Miller?
This next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so there's plenty of festivities going on. And I want to remind everybody about the March Against Violence on Sunday night. That's, it could be a little cool this year, but we've been in colder days. So everybody come out and meet, and it's usually around six o'clock, five-thirty, six o'clock. And we're starting at the fountain again, as usual. So come out and speak, March Against Violence. I did get a chance to go up to Richmond yesterday, met with council members and city government representatives from Bristol and Portsmouth. This is our coalition for the Convention Center Casino. And I got a chance to meet with these people, and they're really excited about the casinos and convention centers in their area. It was a packed house. A delegate marshal spoke on the benefits to the South Side. All the representatives who spoke mentioned the importance of a referendum to let their people decide if they want to have casino in their area. Afterwards, I met with Senator Ruff, Clarksville, whose district includes part of Danville, Halifax, and pointed out the benefits. The, you know, there will be a considerable amount of taxes forthcoming from this. Danville, of course, would benefit and get all the meals, taxes, and lodging, but most of these communities are doing some sort of revenue sharing with their surrounding counties. Bristol's doing their whole transportation district, which goes all the way to Kentucky. I mean, Lee County, Wise County, and so forth. You know, we'd have to decide what we want to do, but there will be benefits to the surrounding communities. And most of, many of the people who work at casinos, if you've got five thousand to seven thousand jobs, a lot of these will be Pennsylvania County residents or Halifax County residents. So it is beneficial for the whole South Side. Senator Ruff is on the Rules Committee, which will be hearing all gaming issues, casinos, and slot machines, and so forth, on Friday. And the casino bill will be the first thing on the agenda. So that would be determination of where that goes. So it was really a good press conference, and we've got a long road to go to get this here. But, you know, again, Danville's city council is unanimous, the school's board is unanimous. And this is a major, this is something major that could benefit this whole South Side area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Another, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Tomer?
Yes. I want to recognize a special guest today. It's Bring a Kid to Council Day, I guess. I brought my six-year-old, seven-year-old. She just turned seven.
We got a woman on council?
I'll tell you, we do. We have a female. She just turned seven a couple days ago. I'm very proud of her. I'm glad that she insisted she wanted to come with me. I said, you might get a little bored. And she said, no, I want to see how city council works. On the way here, I said, well, we might talk about a few issues. And she said, well, what about a chocolate factory? Can you get a chocolate factory in Danville, Daddy? I said, I don't know about that. And then she said, what about a Chuck E. Cheese? I said, I don't know about that. So she might have a list of requests, City Manager, so next time you'll have to come up there and tell them what you want. But I'm glad my daughter's here. I think it's important to get your children, your nephews, your nieces, involved, grandchildren, whatever, in local government. It's where the rubber meets the road. And it's good to get kids involved at an early age. So I'm glad you're here, Stuart. Thanks for coming with me.
I'll vote for Chuck E. Cheese.
Yeah, I will, too. Yeah, she's much better looking than I am. She definitely gets that from her mother.
We noticed that.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Yeah, I have a special guest here tonight on the other end of the spectrum. My mother is here tonight. She's upset now, because I called her out. But she said she wanted to come to the council meeting tonight, and I said, oh, what did we do wrong? She said she just wanted to, just wanted to come see everyone. She hadn't been down here in a while, so. Oh, yeah, she doesn't, yeah. Normally, she's helping watch my kids, so she's got the night off tonight, so she's down here. So thank you, Ma, for coming. And just a few quick points. This came up during the discussion, and I know some of us on council have had discussions about it, and may want to talk about it further, but Airbnb and this, and it came up when we had to do the approval for the particular case, I would really like it if we could look at the locality agreement in terms of the way that that revenue is collected. Blacksburg's a great example of how that's being done. You enter into an agreement with Airbnb. It's much easier. We don't have to have staff time devoted to it, taking time away from other things they need to be doing. It's just a much simplified process. We don't need to reinvent the wheel on it. It's something that a lot of localities are doing, and hopefully, we can have a discussion about soon. Briefly about the casino, we talked a lot about it at last. Me and Dr. Miller just gave a great, in-depth discussion on it, so I won't repeat a lot of that. I will just say very briefly, we continue to get feedback from folks. I keep getting people texting me and calling me and emailing me just about, well, definitely every day, and quite frequently throughout the day, majority of which is positive in support of, and saying, leave them, make it happen. You guys, make it happen, make it happen, make it happen. And, believe me, we appreciate the feedback. But I will just say that it's out of city council's hands at this point. It's in the hands of the legislators in Richmond. And if you feel passionately about it, you know, if you want to let folks know that you support it and things of that nature, at this point, you could contact Delegate Marshall, but we know he's in support of it. He's actually a co-patron on the bill. You should contact Senator Bill Stanley and contact Senator Frank Ruff, and let them know how you feel, because it may be voted on very soon. And so they need to hear from you, because we're hearing from you. And, believe me, we love it. And again, we appreciate that feedback. But it's out of our hands at this point. So it's in the hands of the legislators. And I trust the voters of Danville, that if this comes back to a referendum and the people get to vote on it, I think that's the way it should be. And I trust the people of Danville to make that decision, whatever that decision may be. I hope Senator Frank Ruff and Senator Bill Stanley will do the same. And lastly...
And lastly, we had a lot of good news last week. I want to end on a high note here. We had some good news, some positive momentum about the white mill that was out there. And then one that may have been a little bit overlooked, because the white mill got a lot of the attention, and we're excited about that, believe me, we are. But the old Register and B building, which is right across the street here, a man named Ed Walker, who if you're not familiar with him, I suggest everyone watching right now, Google Ed Walker Roanoke, and look at the projects that he has done over the years. The fact that this man is now investing in Danville is a big deal, guys. It's a very big deal. We're very excited about this particular project, and even more excited about what may lay, what may lie ahead. And Ed Walker is going to do great things for Danville, and we're very excited to have him onboard. I've said this a few times, I'm going to keep saying it, because I believe it, and it's already starting. 2019 is going to be the year of Danville, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Yeah, I just was with Ken, did you get with Kathy Milam about the Sutherland Mansion?
I have talked to her, I'll follow up with her again.
Okay, thank you. And also, the retention pond on Orchard, when the water came up the last rain, it still had debris on top of it. But there was, our crews were down the road, still clearing other drains as it was coming up, so I can't necessarily say it wasn't cleared before it got there, but there ought to be an easier solution for that retention pond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, we heard about it earlier tonight, I'm going to throw it out there again. This year's Heart Gala is Saturday, February 9th, from 6:00 PM to midnight, at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. Tickets are $75 a person, and if you need any, you can contact Kelly Clay at 434-799-4260. Make sure you get that, get to that event, it should be a great time. And you get to see Dr. Miller in rare form, cutting a rug. Man, can that guy dance. If you haven't seen it, boys, you guys are missing out, trust me. He's a heartthrob, that's for sure. And also, I'd like to talk with Dr. Miller, and I think, Lee, you're a part of it as well, the Sports Tourism Board, that you guys founded a while back. I've got a local guy that's done baseball tournaments, coached, and done all that stuff, would love to be a part of it. Mr. Sean Wesley is really excited about this, and ready to get onboard with you guys and make some things happen with that. So if one of you guys would get with me later this evening, I'll get you his contact information. So, other than that, I have nothing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, City Manager, I've had a few questions about the bypass on 29th, although it's been raining, and it was concerning. What is the date for that to be finished?
The latest I've heard is that they're hoping to have two lanes of traffic on the southbound side, starting probably later this week or early next week, depending on any weather issues that occur. They're creating the barrier for the traffic, so that there's not, you know, they don't want to, of course, have anybody confused about which side of the road they need to be on during that section, so they've got to have a barrier between the lanes, and they're working on that right now. And hopefully, once that's in place, it'll be just a little bit congested, but you'll, it'll be a lot better than having to have a detour through the city. Once they're, they've got that finalized, they've been working on the actual issue itself, which is a couple of sinkholes due to deteriorated pipes. They've been working on that, they've got new pipes onsite, I don't know if they've placed them yet, but that project's supposed to be in the two-to-three month timeframe, so they should be, it should be back open to regular traffic.
Something will be open by the end of the week.
Yeah. You should be able to use the bypass soon, this week, next week. It should be back to four lanes, probably in two or three months.
Main thing is to have both sides open as soon as possible, I think.
Yes, yeah. Two ways, this week or next week. Really depends on weather and any, sometimes issues come up, but we're not in any control of that project, it's VDOT that's doing that, but they're doing a very good job keeping us informed about what's happening. We have a good working relationship with them, and they are very eager to get this underway as quickly, or get this fixed as quickly as possible.
Do you think there has been an impact on the roads by the traffic going through the city?
We suspect that there likely has been some impact, there's been more travel on the roads, but that, and also the snow that occurred, the ice, a lot of other things, it's a bad time of year, anyway, so we've had some issues, but we're trying to keep on top of those issues as much as possible. We did ask the public to let us know when there's a pothole or some issue with the road